On February 7th, and would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see guests. Thank you for coming. My first selectmen's report on Wednesday, the 25th, I had the pleasure of meeting with members of the Human Services Planning Council to present the state of the town and to answer questions. And for those of you that may not know, the Human Services Planning Council is organized by the Community Fund, and it brings together nonprofits, governmental and educational leaders to discuss and develop plans to address social needs in our community. Similarly, I'll be doing a state of the town for the Senior Men's Association tomorrow morning. Being able to meet with these groups allows me to hear firsthand about initiatives they are undertaking and also to communicate the ways that Darien is adapting to changes in our community. And to younger residents in our community, I had the pleasure of speaking with the second graders over at Royal School, and I have learned a whole lot about second grade, and also that the second graders in general are very excited about ice cream. They're excited about the new store coming, but they're really fond of gophers, ice cream, not the little critter. EverSource's clearcutting continues to be actively debated in Darien and around the state. As the board knows, it took hundreds of town employee hours and tens of thousands of dollars in lawyers' fees to reach an agreement with EverSource and ConDOT to come to a state-mandated mediation decision on Little Brook properties, including the town right-of-way owned land, which I think it's safe to say no stakeholders are completely satisfied. There are more projects in town getting underway in areas where the town has no control. Last week, our state representative Tracy Mara alerted me to Senate Bill 122. And this is a bill that's before the Environment Committee, which another one of our representatives, Tom O'Day, sits on. The bill is titled "An Act Concerning the Replanting of Trees in Public Areas Cleared by Utility Companies," which would require utility companies to fund compensation to towns to address the remediation from clearcutting in public spaces. I testified to the committee, relaying some of the experiences that we had over at Little Brook and the process, and some of the real-life inadequacies of the PURA process. A Little Brook resident also very effectively testified about her personal experience. So I encourage all people that are interested in utility clearcutting to review this Senate Bill 122 and to provide support and commentary to all of our representatives, both our state representatives and our senators. The only way to change the process is at the state level. The New Canaan Branch Noise Abatement Feasibility Study, you've heard me talk about that a few times, it's moving forward. WestCOG has hired a consulting group, SRF, to conduct a review of 11 railroad crossings along the New Canaan branch of Metro North between Stanford and New Canaan. A diagnostic meeting will be held in early April with representatives from Metro North, ConDOT, WestCOG, the consulting group, and local officials. And prior to this, WestCOG and SRF consulting group will compile relevant data from the last three years on train counts and daily traffic count information to distribute prior to the meeting. So I ask anyone that's interested in this noise abatement study to let me know, and I will put your name into the email list to be receiving updates on this on a regular basis. The Women's Business Development Council is sponsoring an Equity Match Grant Program. The program offers grants of up to $10,000 to women-owned businesses in Connecticut that have been in business for two or more years and have revenues of between $25,000 and $2 million. Applications have to be filled by February 28th, and you can visit the Women's Business Development Council website for more information. In closing, I want to thank the department heads, Jen Trineski, the Director of Finance, and Kate Bush, our Town Administrator, for their diligent preparation of the budget we've been reviewing for the past week. This board plans to vote on the budget tomorrow night. Once it's finalized, it'll be presented to the Board of Finance on March 7th. Those are my comments. Kate?
Major focus around here has been the budget. But last week, a number of employees attended mental health first aid training, which was led by Allie Ramsdell, our Director of Human Services, and Paula Sutcliffe, our public health nurse. And we hope to have more such training sessions available to employees in the future. It was really a worthwhile program. And then today, a number of our employees participated in a tabletop exercise run by Demis Region One. Scenario is response to a mass shooting. So I've heard good things about the exercise. And the other thing I wanted to tell you about is, we recently went through an analysis of our 457 plans, which is the deferred compensation plan that employees can participate in, and we moved to consolidate the plans under one record keeper to improve service for our employees and lower the fees that they pay. So that transition will be happening later this month. And that's it.
Okay. Board liaison, Michael?
Light Review Board meets tomorrow afternoon, so we'll have something at the next meeting.
It means when, Mike?
Tomorrow afternoon.
Tomorrow, okay. Sarah?
The Thriving in Task Force has not met since our last meeting. For the Henley Homes Royal Building Committee, we had our last meeting on February 1st. There have been approvals and things happening around town. We've had a positive recommendation from the Architectural Review Board towards the P&amp;Z Commission, and that process for the Architectural Review Board is, the meeting approval process rather, is complete. They've closed the public hearings for the three schools. The resolutions have passed for the P&amp;Z Commission for Henley and Royal. And so Homes is up next. They've got that up. There are some issues relating to stormwater management at the Henley property line under discussion. And then at Homes, there's concern for neighbors around the parking in the north end of the parking lot and adding the service driveway and stormwater management. They're working on permits and precinct documents and drawings, and they're all being compiled by the consulting team at the end of the week for the town submission. Once the putting in zoning resolutions have been received, they expect to submit those by Thursday. They've got some Zoom meetings with the state coming up next week and the week after, but our next meeting as a committee should be February 15th.
So are you every two weeks now?
Yes. What we're trying to do is also to make sure that we have the information that we need for the next meeting. If we have steps or we're waiting for approvals to make decisions, so we check in to make sure with our architects and the construction, to make sure that if there's approval that we need, maybe we don't meet yet until we have that information. So it is a little more flexible. We're aiming to be every two weeks, yes. Usually Wednesday nights at 6:00, and it's always on Zoom to make sure everyone can Zoom in from the architects and so forth. So we're very appreciative of all their time. Thanks, Sarah.
The IT Committee has also not met since our last meeting. As a reminder, we're focused on trying to wrap up the committee's work. The two major areas are the survey results, which I think I alluded to briefly last time, and this survey was to town employees, elected officials, trying to surface some ideas about how all of our IT could work better. Interestingly, the biggest suggestion was training and awareness and making sure that people had a chance to learn what resources we have out there. One of the comments I had on that was that we had to think about something that might drive efficiency and standardization. When everybody is trained on IT and they get to hear what other departments are doing, people will coalesce around kind of what the right, the best solution is and adopt that. At least, that's my theory, so I'm hopeful about that. The other piece is that Jeff Kraus is working on some specific IT suggestions related to our taxpayer experience, if you will, and those will be forthcoming. And I think at that point, hopefully April, May, we'd be able to wrap up the committee's work. That's it.
Our tax payments.
Well, so we can take wires for tax payments and all of that. I think it's much more the stuff that's sort of downstream of that and trying to think about diversifying the ways that payments can be accepted. I mean, young people don't have checking accounts, for instance. My kids use Venmo and that sort of thing. And so we've talked about all this for years, and so we'll have more to say about that.
Interesting. Chris?
Oxbridge Building Committee has not met. We meet again on Thursday. I did drive in yesterday morning, and the structure is fully up. The walls are up. You can see where the footprint is. It's really getting on its way. It's exciting. So I'm looking forward to an update on that. Mental Health Task Course met yesterday as an entire committee, and I certainly want to send my gratitude out. This room is filled with a ton of adults who are so engaged and so interested in the mental health of our community, and it's really touching to see all the support that we're getting for this mission. Anyway, we had a young woman came in yesterday from Darien High School. She gave a presentation. Her name is Aparna Chandabarka. I apologize for hacking that if I did. But Darien Youth Community Conversations had collaborative efforts where they brought in, I think it was 30 high school students, both in Darien and other schools throughout the town, and got together and had a conversation with these kids to sort of find out, you know, what they feel is some of the roadblocks that they find in mental health. And Aparna gave this amazing presentation on what the takeaways was that Deborah Hirst had facilitated. There were no adults in the room, so it was a really open dialogue between the kids, and it was really some great feedback that I think the Mental Health Task Force really took to heart. I think everybody was super engaged when they heard it. And again, gave us some really good goals and missions to start working on as a community. We are hardly working on finding a company to do our mental health assessment, town-wide mental health assessment. It's not anything that's ever been really done. There's one organization in Florida that is out to bid for us. It's an expensive project, but it is something that I think is worthwhile in our community, you know, certainly coming off post-COVID and what we've experienced over the last three years. So we are working to find a facilitator to do that, to get those results back, and hopefully we'll have some answers in the next couple weeks. February 14th, we're meeting as a programming committee, and at that point, we're going to start taking a look at some of the resiliencies and different programs that we can have for the different age groups. Right now is the point, we're past the post-vention stage, so once you're six months out, you can start to really talk about resiliency training programs. So that's in our scope. So hopefully next month, I'll have a little bit more feedback on one of those programs that are going to roll out.
Okay. Thanks. Public comment?
Jack Davis, 197 Hoyt Street, and Chair of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I want to report on some of the comments that we did when we discussed this budget last week. We recognize that the individuals who have put the budget together has done a very good job. However, we still have some comments. We understand that effects on inflation in the business world, there have been layoffs, or they cut other expenses. Now, we're not suggesting that there is any layoffs here, but to counter that, we do not feel that this is the right year to hire extra FTEs other than essential workers that need to perform inspections and other aspects of that. The police has stated that there's been no hires, but in reality, I've heard from many RTM members that the police has hired nine theoretically in the civilian dispatch. That was supposed to free up two officers. One became the Middlesex SRO. The other was promised to be our narcotics officer. Now we're hearing that we need the narcotics officer, partially because we can't fund the, we can't find enough people to fill all those nine positions. I believe that we're seven of nine. We believe that, we're not arguing whether or not we need traffic control or whether or not we need a narcotics officer, but we do believe that with only having 46 out of 51 officers now, which is a five vacancy, and we'd go up to seven. And historically, we haven't been at full staff for either civilian dispatch or the police. That, and we applaud the fact that vacancy was added this year, but we think the vacancy should be greater to accommodate those other positions. We believe that the Board of Finance contingency should be reduced by at least $100,000. Historically, they're not using the 150, and there's a new advent here. In the past, it was always because the RTM couldn't react. However, it takes 48 hours for a special meeting. RTM can meet virtually and pass anything, and as we found out, it doesn't matter the order of when things are approved. So effectively, if we know something's coming down the road, the RTM can do something because it's a three-legged stool, and we could vote to approve something and contingent upon the Board of Selectment or the Board of Finance, which would typically be the one to approve it. And so therefore, we don't see the need for it to continue at $250,000. Lastly, the Parks and Rec Commission requested that the aerator be added back to the Black Lagoon. We're not opposed to the aerator being added. However, we do believe with two projects that are being pulled offline because they're over $1 million, that if in fact the aerator is added back, another project that is in capital of equal or greater value be removed from capital. Those are just some basic thoughts, and we do think that everybody's and department heads have done an excellent job as we typically expect them to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Any other public comment?
Hello, my friends. There was a lot of chatter about pickleball. I was watching you guys the other day. A lot of laughter there. Sadly, you know what happened with the vandalism there, so we're working on that. Pardon?
Name and address.
Oh, Patty Baumgartner, 64 Hanson Road, District One RTM and Parks and Rec Commission, or Committee. I'm actually going to speak, I want to reiterate, I won't go through all the points. I thought Lori Bora did a really nice job last Tuesday. I was driving in from Vermont, and I got caught in that Springfield traffic, so I didn't make the meeting on time. But I want to, I do want to support, I want to support a lot of the things she said, but to Jack's point, I spend every day down at Chair &amp; Lawn in the morning with my dogs, and I've been watching that pond for years get gross and green and disgusting. And I thought she did a very eloquent job talking about how we've, you know, done a beautiful job on the pavilion, and we're about to finish it off down there. We did the roof. We've done the invasive works. We cleared out a lot of area. We can see that pond. It's a beautiful vista when you pull in to look down there, and it is green and it is gross. And the Darien Nature Center has been taking water samples for the last year plus, and they're finding that there's a decent amount of some of the smaller fish, reptile, whatever they're calling them, are passing on. And I know they're trying to get a grant to do some things for it. The aerator will absolutely help. I would recommend, if you get a chance this weekend, go down and look at our partner, New Canaan's Waveney Pond, and what they've done. It's tremendous. They've really cleared that whole thing out, planted tons of trees, tons of plants, chairs all around. It's quite a lovely thing to see. I don't think this is a lot to ask, especially since the money's coming out from the Darien Foundation gift. And so I'm just here to pitch that. All right? Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? Public comments? Kate, did we receive anything?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next order of business is to discuss and take action on a request for an appropriation and bonding authorization for $825,415 for the purchase of a pumper for the Nuroton Heights Fire Department. And I think we have Assistant Chief here, yep, Justin Plank, and who else?
Don't know.
Good evening. My name is Justin Plank. I'm the First Assistant Chief with the Nuroton Heights Fire Department. I've been serving in this role for three years now. I'm also the Chairman of the Pumper Replacement Committee. So I'm here this evening to seek approval to purchase a new engine. This engine will be replacing our current 1989 Mack CF pumper. We looked at a couple of different options with replacing this truck. We looked at refurbishing. It didn't make fiscal sense to us to put $300,000 into a 34-year-old piece of apparatus. We wouldn't have been able to bring it up to current safety standards even if we did put that much money into it. And that's what I'm here for. If, you know, I'm open to questions and whatever you'd like me to talk about regarding the truck.
Well, you know what, Justin? We invested in the Emergency Services Analysis Report, and they took a look at all of our emergency services. And when I was flipping through this to see where they felt, where they landed on new equipment, they don't underline a lot, but they underlined apparatus that was not manufactured to applicable National Fire Protection Association guidelines, or that is 25 years old, should be replaced. The "should be replaced" is underlined. So I personally, I noted that you refurbished it in 2006, and I'm not sure the other two pieces that are coming up were refurbished, but that answers a lot of my questions. So any questions from the board?
I couldn't seem to dig up the replacement schedule, but this is on there?
Yes.
This was planned? Okay. Thank you.
And what do you expect the useful life of this new piece of equipment to be?
So approximately 20 years. We've gotten, traditionally, we've gotten way longer out of trucks. You know, NFPA recommends that 20 years is really the cap, and we've had trucks that have served us way longer than that, and it's been a huge cost savings. And, you know, we take great pride in taking care of our apparatus, so we don't expect any issue with 20 years.
Thank you. Are you going to sell the current one?
So that's, it's been discussed. It's also working with the dealer that we've been working with. They've offered trade-ins. Not sure about the cost of the, you know, what we would get for a trade-in yet. You know, the truck is still in service, and the new truck would only be expected anywhere from 14 to 16 months. So it is a pretty quick turnaround time, you know, in today's industry. So, you know, at that time, they'll evaluate the truck and determine what they think it's worth.
And who does the maintenance, like the day-to-day kind of?
So we have a in-house mechanic, and then we also use other, we use other vendors that are emergency vehicle technician certified, and...
Okay. Any other questions?
What's the timing on all this? So this, this will be for an appropriation now to launch the process for purchasing this?
Yes.
And so we can start right away?
Yes. So we're ready to go as soon as we have all of our approvals. Truck has been spec. We're looking to purchase it through HGAC, which is a cooperative purchasing agency or group. So there's no reason to go out to bid, and we're able to take advantage of ordering it before any more price increases hit us.
Sarah, any questions? Okay. There are no other questions. We have a motion to approve a request for an appropriation and bonding authorization for $825,415 for the purpose of a pumper for the Nuroton Heights Fire Department. Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you, Justin.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Kate, next up is to discuss and take action on a request to accept and appropriate a gift of $20,000 from the Dortelman family for restoration of the Cherry Lawn Park gazebo. And I think we have Pam Gary to speak to this. Pam?
Good evening. Pamela Gary, Director of Parks and Recreation here in Darien.
Susan Daley, 15 Queensland. I'm also on the commission, Parks and Rec.
So we're here to look for approval for this donation. That was such a generous donation by the Dortelman family. They approached me in the fall of 2021, wanting to do something really special for their father in memory of their dad. And we worked together and came up with a restoration project of the gazebo. And we currently had $15,000 for the roof, which we have completed in December. And then we just went out to bid for the body of it, came back at 17.5, which clearly is enough now with the $20,000 from the Dortelman family to finish the project and have enough money for the plaque in the memory of the father.
That was my question. Was there a plaque? So assuming the appropriation, you know, everything goes fine, when are you, what's the time schedule?
Well, we just wrote a word letter to the contractor. That was a little spitter. And we're looking to have the work done in the spring.
In the spring.
And according to his schedule, I mean, I haven't touched base, but I just finished the references. And so if he can get started earlier, great. So we just would like to have it done by spring. And the Dortelman family, obviously, would like to see that completed as well, so.
Well, we're very, very appreciative of their generosity, and I'm glad there'll be a plaque.
Yeah. And then our guys, our part crew, will finish the job by painting it.
Okay.
So the restoration with the contractor now would just be to put on the 88 ramp, the railings, and some other curious boards that need to be changed out. And then when the warmer weather, our part crew will paint it.
Any questions?
I appreciate this kind of generosity, and just another shout-out to the Dortelman family for doing something like this. We love that, and it just points again to what a great town this is in terms of volunteers and their time and money.
Very generous. Okay. There are no other questions or comments. We have a motion to approve a request for an appropriation and bonding authorization, or I'm sorry, to accept and appropriate a gift of $20,000 from the Dortelman family for restoration of the Cherry Lawn Park gazebo. John moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sis.
Pam, don't leave. You're next.
Oh, I thought that was below.
All right. Next item is to discuss and take action on a request to accept and appropriate a gift of $25,000 from the Darien Foundation for preparation of a bid package for the Weed Beach Meadow and Trail Project. Pam, you want to fill us in?
Sure. So we had reached out to the Darien Foundation to let them know we had some, you know, we were bringing up the plans again for Weed Beach Meadow and Trail Project, and they showed great interest in having us come to present. So Lori Bora and myself did. Unfortunately, Susan was sick that night, so she couldn't make it. But we did a nice presentation with the foundation, and, you know, very quickly did they get back to us within a couple of days and showed their excitement about the project. And they, the grant, the board approved a grant for up to $350,000 for the project. However, it was kind of out of cycle. So Kate said, you know, if anything, we should probably look to see if we could, that was outside of the budget, the actual project. So we asked the Darien Foundation if they would, they had offered to expedite the project by giving an additional $25,000 for the bid package. So we went back to them and said, you know, now that we watched the budget rollout, it's processed, if you'd still be interested in doing that. And they approved that to get started so that we could finalize the quote and make sure that we're within what our estimate is asking at a million. So...
Pam, they are absolutely, totally understand that this is not, you know, a done deal, right?
Yes.
Right?
They understand, but in terms of their grant approval, they, if it does roll out, they would like to see that the project be done before the fiscal year.
Okay. So they have a time?
So they do understand that this $25,000 is to get cost estimate on the project.
Okay.
And hoping that we would be staying within, if not under, the estimate that we've received from Weston and Sampson.
Okay. Any questions, Sarah?
I remember the discussions a few years ago when they were talking about this originally.
A long time come.
Yeah. Yep. We got very granular at those discussions, talking about the kind of woods we're using. Is it EPE? We were looking at all these things. When we look at the bid process, does it get granular like that, or is it more allowing for the different people who respond to the bid to give different options? Okay.
Right. So it's going to be, it's going to have a few documents filled with specifications and design.
Right. But we're not asking specifics like that.
No. And we, with our... And we, with our working group, Pear Tree Meadow, I'm sorry, Pear Tree, got too many projects going on, Weed Beach Meadow and Trail Working Group, as we discussed for eight months, we were just more mindful with everything that was happening here in town to reduce the costs of that project.
Right.
So even when we talk about EPE, we took the boardwalk out.
Right, right. And so the, the walkway is just along the waterfront? When you say the divine waterfront, do you mean just the area that's from where the beach is down to the waterfront, down to the other end of the, like past the playground and in front of the patio?
No, that's all been removed if you want to speak to that.
Yeah. We're focusing the effort just because we started with a $2.4 million project that included everything. Right, right, right. And we really wanted to see this project go forward. And I asked the committee if we could go and bring something back to town that we could do, that shovel-ready and we can provide to our residents. Right. And we found that the biggest interest for our group was to really utilize that short lane property because it's not being used right now. Right. And so we asked Weston and Sampson to come back with something where they're focusing on that. Okay. And redoing it, regrading, and with the idea that hopefully if, you know, there are other opportunities, you know, maybe down the line, but right now we just want to get something for the residents to use. And that includes the expansion of the beach, grading, removing some of the invasives there. Yeah, the site work. Do the remediation. So there's a lot of, I mean, there's still a lot there. It's just that we felt like the 2.4 was just, you know, going to be... It's an incredibly large number, yeah. And so we wanted to make it. So then when we got the partnership with the Darien Foundation, as you know, they've been a huge partner of the town for many years. I mean, they did the playground with us. They're the reason that got kick-started. We were actually at a point where we didn't know where we were going to get our next funding. They did that. They added the swing set. They did the flagpole. So this is just kind of full circle for us to see, have this partnership go forward. And they've been very good to us, so.
And one of the highlights too, what we kept in was the walking trails. So it's a paved walking trail so we can have families with young kids learning to ride their bikes, get out of the parking lot. You know, it gives an opportunity for, for events like the Ladders, Lobster and Ladders Group for the Fire Department to get out of the parking lot and have, you know, green grass to have their event on. Because typically, and even the Weed Beach Fest, the first year was held in the parking lot because there just wasn't enough, you know, grassy area to hold any community gatherings. So it really does open up a beautiful way of letting residents enjoy property like this as we do Highland on the other end of the town. So it's...
It's flat. It's open space. Like people could do picnics there. There are going to be trees, there's going to be shade, and it's going to be one level, so it'll be very usable. And the pathway itself is about, I think, eight feet. And so that, there's going to be, nobody's going to be, you know, I think that's wider than Highland, right? Highland is 60.
Yes, yes. But we need it too for the utility road, for our park crew to get in there and be able to maintain it. Darien Junior Sailing is still going to be in its corner, but in a nice cleaned-up corner with the pathway, access with the pathway. Because the current road that leads there now would be filled and it would be, that would be the beach extension with dunes that kind of met right into a rolling lawn.
So Pam, you're painting a beautiful picture, but you and Susan are going to be able to come back and give us a presentation with, okay?
Once we're doing it for the full project. Right. This is just to kind of get an idea. I mean, we may have to change things if we find out that the bid package, the cost of something is just way out of proportion. We're not going to. So we'll do a modification because again, we had to, I was on Weed Beach one, I call it one, I know this is, I don't know what this is, two. We had to do a little bit of that and, you know, to make it work. Because we understand that at the end of the day, we don't want to go grossly over budget. We want to do something for the town that they can use within, or what we can pay for. So...
Well, it's incredibly generous of the Darien Foundation, so.
Yep.
Any other comments for Susan or Pam? No? Okay. Seeing none, may have a motion to accept and appropriate a gift of $25,000 from the Darien Foundation for preparation of a bid package for the Weed Beach Meadow Trail project. Do I see, I see. Marcy moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for joining us. Thanks, Pam. Okay. So that is, that brings us up to item four, which is review of the fiscal year 2023-24 proposed budget. And I guess, you know, this is a night to, you know, definitely have a conversation. I know that we've seen a lot of growth in the number of businesses that have moved to town, the number of residents, the number of new dwellings. We've seen a growth in demand for our services, for our programs. We've seen a demand increase in calls from the police for, for senior help and for mental health help. We've also seen, you know, a growth in the gram list and in our, you know, our revenues and our tax investment income, our treasury income. So, I don't know, I feel like I want to open up the conversation and see really where all of you are as far as if you, where you are on the budget and are you comfortable with where we are? And if not, where would you like to, what direction would you like us to go? I'll just open it up to anybody that has any comments.
Well, I guess I could start, but as an overall matter, I mean, obviously an immense amount of work has gone into this. I have concerns about the addition of the FTEs. We've talked about that a little bit. And I wonder if there's a kind of a middle ground, you know, to find in terms of the overall package between the, you know, police, emergency management, parking. Maybe might be wise to revisit some of those proposals. I don't want to say that I'm for or against a particular, you know, thing, but I think just those, just those numbers are a little bit of a concern to me.
So you're, so what I'm hearing is the FTEs?
The FTEs.
A little discussion there?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, just across the, just across the board.
Okay. All right. Sarah, you have any thoughts?
I would echo, I think we need to be very careful as we add FTEs to our budget. I think there's value in adding staff where we need it, particularly, you know, so that the fire marshal has enough staff to make sure that they can make all the inspections. With the police department, I'd love to see them get up to full speed and then maybe add another one. I, I don't know what the right answer is. I don't want to keep them from being the most effective force that they are, but I would love to see them get to full capacity and then add the other one. Yeah. I would love to add back in the chairs for the dispatchers. I echo the thoughts for Parks and Rec to add in the aerator. I, you know, I echo Mike's thoughts. I think this was an incredibly incredible amount of work by our staff to put this together and all thought out. I, there's a lot of moving pieces and trying to, you know, hit that aim. Yeah, I, I don't know how others feel about the, the ads for the FTEs, I guess.
Johnny, thoughts?
Yeah, a couple of things. I agree with you on the FTEs and Jack's comment about that as well. It does feel like what we should be doing is getting to the staff that's already been provided for and that once they have that, then to kind of build from there. But the reality is, is that they haven't been staffed up for what they have for quite some time. And so as we think about trying to assist them and get the personnel levels up to what they need, it feels like they need to do that first. But let's, let's continue to discuss that. I think I would add on Jack's comment about the Board of Finance reserve. That, that reserve was $400,000. We ended up cutting it to $250,000 and that's been, I don't know, five or six years ago that we did that. That reserve, I think, remains a good idea. One of the things that we tried to do when we reset it at $250,000 to make sure that it was palatable to the RTM was we set up a process of discussion, anytime, I'm assuming this is still in effect, anytime it looked like we were going to use that reserve. So you were brought into the discussion and we had a debate about it and there was no, in other words, there were no surprises and it wasn't like it was not vetted. And so I think that constraining the board from taking action on something that's urgent by reducing that reserve, I'm not so sure is a good idea. I would say that even being able to convene Zoom meetings, the reality is, is you still can't do that immediately and that's what this reserve was intended for. And even if you do convene the meeting pretty quickly, there's still a lot of people wouldn't be able to participate just because the meeting was called at the last minute as opposed to being scheduled way in advance. So I, I thought we thought through it pretty carefully when we both reset it at $250,000 and then created a better and more transparent process for using that. I still think that's the right answer, but obviously the current Board of Finance needs to weigh in on that. But that's my only comments on those. I think you've got some comments for our discussion earlier today about some large items that we necessarily wouldn't want to cut so much as defer, given the percentage increase in the budget that we're looking at this year. And it wouldn't be terrible if we did. And so I, I'm supportive of some, a lot, actually all of what you proposed when we talked today, but I'll leave that to you.
Okay. Marcy? I also, you know, have some additional questions on the FTEs. You know, I, I know that when we originally were asked what we would look for in department heads as they rolled out their budget, one of the things we said is how can we automate, how can we become as electronically competent as we can? And so I asked that question about the parking attendant, is there other methods that we could do that could turn to technology to sort of keep that EFT from having to get a second parking attendant in? I don't know the answers to that. I'm sure there's a lot of, you know, technology-based ways in which, in which we can improve the parking situations at the train stations. So whether that's a question for this year or not, I don't know. And same with the fire department, with the police department, wondering, you know, at full capacity what things would be if they had the 51 officers that they were originally asking for. But I'm up, up to hear discussion on that. I also, you know, want to look at a lot of the park and rec capital projects and with the acquisition of Great Island and the pipeline, I, I know that there's not many that are in, in this budget, but as we're going forward in the next year, sort of looking at these capital projects with that as an additional space in there. And are there other ways in which we can look our community and look at our parks with that additional space that would kind of change how we look at our, you know, six-year capital plan for that, for that department in particular?
Okay. Okay, well, I think, I think we're all probably in somewhat of an agreement that we're, we're trying to understand. I personally support the police department, obviously, and, you know, I don't think the police department would ask for additional staff if they didn't feel the need. But I also think it's, you know, maybe not the best use of taxpayers' money to fund something that we don't have. So I think, Jen, could you go through if we, maybe do if we did one officer or if we started instead of a July 1st, we started a January 1st?
So what we put together is a list of, or a presentation of all the positions that are requested. And I really need a mouse.
Do you want one? I have one here.
Do you? Yeah. Although I don't think I have another port for it, so never mind. So what we have is a proposed start date and we can play around with that and see what the impact is on the budget. So for the police officers, each one is coming in at a total of 128,600. If we were to not fund one in the current year, that's how much we would be able to reduce. We'd reduce it 128,600. And if we only funded half a year, we'd reduce our budget 57,549.
So just to give a little color, I, you know, you're all saying that about the concern about the reaching full staffing. Right now, in addition to the chief and the two captains, we have 44 officers. We do anticipate hiring three certified officers in the next few months, but we also anticipate a current, another current officer retiring in the same timeframe. And that would put us at 46, which is too short. We would normally have 48 unranked and filed. So I think you've raised a very good point about whether or not we can actually get to our current staffing levels, let alone adding two more.
Is there any reason that we couldn't just signal to the department that we're supportive of getting aggregate staffing up to X number and that what we'd rather do is not appropriate money to fill that position, given you have these other positions you have to fill first? And let's see how it plays out. There's no reason that we couldn't do a one-off appropriation, try and support that if in fact they do get to that point, but burdening the taxpayers with that now and it's not going to, it's not happening.
Yeah. So in the office, we've talked through multiple scenarios. You could say, my gut would say, you know, look at, the most you should do is look at funding one in January. You could fund none and tell them, you know, you're authorized to go up to 53. And if you get too ready to hire, then come to us and we'll ask for special appropriation. But just remember that that means the whole, you know, going through the whole, all the way up to the RTM to get that money. But that is absolutely a possibility for you to take, an action for you to take.
How many dispatchers are non?
We have nine. We have seven right now.
Out of nine?
We're funded for nine.
Okay.
And we've come close to being at nine a couple of times, but we have not been able to get there yet.
But having the nine would also help to relieve some of the...
Well, right now that we're able to put one officer on midnights on a regular basis. And it doesn't fill that shift seven days a week, but the, the other dispatchers have expressed a desire to begin filling those shifts themselves on overtime. So we're hopeful that we won't be putting an officer in that position anymore.
And then hopefully if we had the full contingent of nine, then there would be no overtime necessary for those.
Once we get to nine civilian dispatchers, the only time we would be putting a police officer in the dispatch center would be in a, in an emergency.
Okay.
And that would only be if we couldn't get other dispatchers.
Right.
Yeah.
With the, with the emergency management person in that position, how do you anticipate evaluating how that is going? How the, you know, how a person in that position is, you know, adding value? Because I can, you know, because the two things I always think about is like, like John, like, you know, boy, that's, any FTE is, is a real commitment. And once you add that asset, how do you evaluate the performance? Because with this person, it would be kind of bringing together and synthesizing a number of emergency items. So how do we know whether or not if we make this commitment, if it's giving value?
Well, one of the first things it does is it gives us back the assistant fire marshal as a full-time fire marshal. But I would expect that position to be running the emergencies on a, on a different level and applying for the FEMA reimbursement when it comes to, you know, whether it's assisting homeowners or assisting the towns, that we would be proactive and be able to accomplish things in a quick timeframe without having to take away from other duties. You know, with regard to, you know, my envisioning part of that role being to handle administration of the fire departments, being able to get the statistics we need, getting the reports that we need in a timely manner and seeing a general improvement in the processing of invoices and budgets with the finance department. And, you know, one reason I envision that it could work with the dual duties there is when you have an emergency and that person needs to be, you know, all their time focused on, you know, the flooding or the fire, the windstorm, that, those type of administrative duties can sit and wait a little while longer. Where right now, our Emergency Management Director, it means he's leaving fire investigative work or leaving inspection work to be done. work or leaving inspection work to be done at a different time or to be done by other employees.
So I really mean just, so if we support this, you know, position, my expectation is that we're going to be able to evaluate it as time goes on and, and look at specific things and say, oh, you know, this is really a boon. And whether it's the, you know, freeing like these other people.
We should all...
I certainly want to be able to see that and see that better work product, the better filings and all those things.
Yes. And I would want to see more grant money available to us in the emergency services field.
Okay.
Yeah, that, and that's really important. And there, you know what? The thing is for, when it's an emergency, is you, you have to do what's most important, and that's helping people. But this grant part, part, that's what I've picked up is that we are, that, that's, that's really important and we're, we're lacking there. We don't have a grant writer and we need, we need support there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So do we, why don't Kate, why don't you go through the sanitarian?
So the sanitarian, and we added documents to the Open Gov that hadn't been there before, where the health director provided a supporting schedule. I was about to go click on it, I think it was going to show up there. Showing the number of hours of inspections that are required as we are getting more and more food establishments and salons that require regular inspections from their department. This is all part of the developments going on, that we have anywhere from 15 to 20 new food establishments coming into town. One of the positives about the sanitarian is that their inspection work is supported by ongoing revenues. Now, it doesn't completely offset it, but it is supported by revenues. So with the estimated number of hours that we have in terms of inspections, we would need to hire the, the second sanar, sanitarian. I don't know if Jen can make it bigger. When you see down at the bottom, yeah, 5,300 hours. That represents just a little bit less than three full-time employees.
And that was last year?
No, right now we have two full-time, the health director and one sanitarian, and we have a part-time sanitarian. So three full-time is about 5,400 because it's 1820.
Okay. And that's what, okay, and that's what we need, okay. Okay.
And he did ask for this last year and we delayed it.
Right. So Kate, you're, you're pretty firm that we need that?
I believe we do.
Did, I see that you had it only there as like a January one start?
Yes, I did.
Because we won't need them really until January.
Right, they're, that's my...
For projects and stuff.
That's my assumption, as, as, you know, not all of those places are going, going to be open in the next few months. So I think we can get by until January.
So when do we start looking for that person?
If we wanted a hire date of January, we'd probably start looking like in September or October.
All right. So, you know, let's, let's go through them all, and if we, you know, if we reach a consensus, then we'll, we'll move on. So any more questions on the sanitarian? Sanitarian? John, any questions? Okay. So are we in support of that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Kate, go through the deputy fire marshal.
So again, with all the, all the new developments and the focus there is, is more on the individual units in multifamily dwelling, we have to inspect each unit every year. And that just adds a tremendous number of hours. And so I'd say this is not the last ad you're going to have to do here. You know, as, if the other projects that are out there come to fruition, it'll add even more of a workload there. So the January one start assumes hiring an EMD director. If we don't, it, because the, the EMD director means that we get basically 1,000 hours of the assistant fire marshal's time back into the fire marshal department. So if you don't hire an EMD director, then I believe that, that deputy fire marshal needs to start sooner. It is supported by, was supported by, you know, more fees that have already happened, but there are some, I'm looking for my notes on this, there are some ongoing fees. But again, it's, it's like the, the sanitarian that they, they're not fully offsetting the cost. But if you remember reading all the building and fire marshal fees that we got as, as the permits were coming in, these are part of the cost of that.
Okay. So any questions on the fire marshal in general?
Just, but do those, do those fees, the collection of those fees, you know, continue now? After all this construction is done and they have their certificates, aren't we going to be generating those kind of fees?
So not the individual apartments, not those? But there are other facilities that we have to inspect on an annual basis that do generate fees. But again, it's not going to support all the costs of that, those positions. But remember, we're also going to be getting taxes off these buildings every year.
Right. Okay. Okay.
All right.
And there's just, you know, if you're going through things in Open Gov, there is also a schedule attached to the fire marshals, but that lays out all the inspections they have to do and the number of apartments and all.
So this looks like another need to have. The question is the start date, right? Which goes back to the EMD?
I feel like I'm supportive of the EMD for the reasons that we, you know, talked about. I mean, that's where I am on that at, at this moment. I don't know how you guys feel.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. The current capacity that we've had and all that has been static for an awfully long time and predates all, I think, even my involvement in government. But given everything that's going on in terms of growth in the town and all that, you match that up against this, and I just don't think we can keep our current capacity as it is. And so, I mean, we talked about this before, but I, I, believe me, on record is not liking, liking to add staff, but I think this is a good one to add, so.
So Kate, you see this as the, the fire service administrator folds into this?
I think so, yes. I think that's, I mean, we need it, right? We need to do something, and I don't mean that as a knock on the volunteers who are doing that, but that's an extra layer of work that they have to do that's difficult for them to do well. Some of them do a great job, but it goes up and down. But it's just another layer of work. And, you know, we already know from the emergency services study, one of the problems we have is knowing what the training levels we have done are, getting more classes offered. And we need somebody who we can tap and say, you know, this needs to get done, or why wasn't it done? And, you know, some of the things that they could do would be to get us more grants for the equipment. And also, you know, with some of these improvements that we could make in the record-keeping, we hopefully could bring, improve our ISO rating, which in turn improves insurance costs for residents.
So I, I, I'm supportive of the EMD. I'm just wondering on the timing, do you think that this is the time to do it based on the fact that we have this study that we need to go into a little bit more?
Um, well...
The study suggested this.
The study suggested it. Could we live without it? Yeah. You know, we can continue to get by as we have.
Would we need the EMD to knock off a lot of the tasks that are on this study?
Yes. There are some of those tasks that we need the EMD to do.
And we wouldn't want to form a...
I don't...
We wouldn't want to form a fire commission before we do this. That's really what I'm asking.
Well...
Which could take, you know, a little bit of time.
Is it necessary, you know, it's not that they'd be reporting to them, but might that help define some things better? Possibly, yeah.
All right. So this would be a start of July, and the deputy fire marshal would be January, is that correct?
Yes. But I feel that if you don't do the EMD, I think you should start the deputy fire marshal sooner.
Right.
Gotcha.
So I guess I, you know, I think the priority is the fire marshal work, to make sure that that's covered.
What if you flip them?
What if you flop, yeah, flop the numbers and start the fire marshal?
Now, and then...
Now, or...
EMD, January.
Does Bobby need the fire marshal now?
Well, the, he's, he can do without, but the, you know, to me, the point was that if you hire the EMD, you get 1,000 hours...
Back.
Back.
Right.
And when I talked to Bobby about it, he made the point that he, he felt there would be a transition time needed, either, you know, if our current EMD stays in that role and gives up the fire marshal duties, or if we bring somebody new in, there's still going to be a discussion and transition between the two roles he occupies now and whoever occupies, you know. But, you know, I want an EMD eventually, but if you're asking me to pick?
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal, yeah.
So here.
Yeah. And I'm also, you know, conscious of, it's a bunch of them, and it's a big number, and...
It's a permanent number.
It's a permanent number, and, you know, we, we've managed. So do we manage for another year? Yeah, we can do that.
I just, I just would be really in favor of both in this cycle if the EMD was also looking at getting grants. You know, when you came and hired a grant, a grant writer for $80,000, so we don't want to do that, but there are a lot of grants out there, especially FEMA-related.
Yeah, there are FEMA grants and, and things called SAFER grants, which, you know, apply to the emergency services, which I don't think we get as we are.
Right.
But there's also not a guarantee that we're going to get them, so.
Right. But we need, when we're hiring, when we're looking, we need to find somebody that has that skill set.
That has that skill set, yes.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Any more discussion on that? No? Okay. So, you know what? Let's, if we can make decisions, let's do it. So who feels emergency management director should be included with a start date of July 1st?
I'm thinking January.
January? If we do January, we can also do fire marshal January?
I don't think so.
Fire marshal is July, this EMD is January.
It does still meant you were cut.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about $37,000.
Okay. So we're fire marshal, start date in July, let's go to that one. Who's in favor of that?
Yep, fire marshal start in, the EMD start in January.
Okay. Okay, unanimous on that? And EMD starting in January? Who's in favor of that?
Yep.
Okay, unanimous on that too, Kate?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Cops? Do you want to think about the patrol officers, or do you want to...
Well, I mean, I could live with one if that was the feeling, and certainly, you know, zero. I think, I think two is definitely out, and it's between one and none.
Okay.
In my, I mean, my...
Okay.
Monica, can I make a suggestion from listening to this? I understand the issue of wanting to have those two jobs appropriated, so if they...
You know what, Jack? It's really tough for people that are watching if you're speaking and you're not on camera.
Sorry. Just a thought. I understand that having those two officers appropriated allows you not to go back to Board of Finance and RTM, should we come to full hair, staff and be able to hire the other two. I also understand the position that we don't want to be taxing our taxpayers for those two positions that we may or may not be able to fill. What I might suggest as a way to work this out is that we put in the two officers, but the cost of those two officers, we put into the vacancy, so net-net, there's no tax, but the appropriation is there. And should we be able to find them, then you just hope that someplace else in the budget, there's 250,000. And if not, at that time, you can come back to the Board of Finance and the RTM. That seems to accomplish both goals and, but still doesn't hit the taxpayer.
Okay. Thanks, John. Okay.
I don't think we can get a vacancy up that high.
That's a big vacancy.
It's a big vacancy. I mean, we do anticipate a senior member of the force retiring during fiscal '24, but we've already built that in. I think if you, you know, one way to do it, just budget for one in January.
Right.
If they get to full strength under their current authorization, you know, before then, and have a candidate, you can do what we did a few years ago when, you know, we had budgeted for the dispatchers in January, and all of a sudden in September, it looked like we were going to be able to get to full strength.
Right.
And we came and said, you know, can you give us money now? I would, I would hedge the bets.
Yep.
And you can even put the money in contingency and, you know, so that it's not just there, but that's where I would go.
Yeah, I support that.
Yeah, I like that.
Me too.
I'd like to see them like follow both with dispatchers and with, you know, officers.
I think they're two separate problems.
But it does combine. You're, you know, you're going to pull an officer to fill the dispatcher spot. It'll help to reduce.
It does, I guess it's, it's not affecting the number of people on the road, having an officer, having to go into dispatch on midnights.
Okay. So Sarah, are you in favor of no additions? One addition?
No, I'm, I'm in favor, I think of January, but I'd really love to see them get to fall first.
Okay.
And I like the idea of putting money in contingency, but I don't know for one or two. I'm not sure how you guys feel about that.
Yeah, I mean, you can put it in contingency, but you're still appropriating that amount of money, so it's still going to hit the taxpayers.
Uh-huh.
I don't know that we need to do that. I like the, like first suggested, I like the hybrid approach, let's approve one FTE starting in January, and we certainly have the capacity to come back if they get to full strength and need to hire somebody. We can react pretty quickly, so let's do that.
I'm fine with that.
Me too.
Yeah.
Okay. You got that, Kate?
Yep.
So one January and one not funded in the current year?
Correct.
Or in the budget unit?
Correct. So Jen, can you tomorrow send out this sheet with our, our request?
Your request?
Update the sheet?
Yeah, I mean, what's on the screen right now?
Yes, yes.
So the net change on that is 223,000 dollar reduction.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question, Kate?
A quick, what kind of question?
Clarifying, the police, they need to hire six officers right now to bring them up to full, correct? They're at 40.
There are 44, that's four.
Okay.
But there are three that are...
Forty, yeah, I'm sorry, 44 rank and file.
Right.
Three, so...
Okay. So how many do they need to hire to be at 51?
They need to hire four.
Four, okay.
And they, the chief has indicated to me...
And they're having one more?
That they have three...
Right.
That are actually certified in, one in Connecticut, two in New York, that they are hoping... That are actually certified in, um, one in Connecticut and two in New York, that they are hoping to hire. And the advantage there is they don't have to go through the academy and they can be on the road much quicker.
And then there's one more that's going to retire next year.
We are expecting one to retire this year.
And by twenty three?
In fiscal twenty three.
Okay, and then one for twenty four.
And one to retire in fiscal twenty four.
So that would be with the January hire, there's seven potential hires in the next year for them. So the four plus two, three plus?
Now, yeah, so three now and then.
So I thought you said four? Okay. Okay.
All right, did I count, we have forty four right now. We hire three, that leaves only one vacancy, but if somebody else retires, that leaves us two vacancies. And then if we.
So that's five.
Have one next year, that would make three more vacancies. And then adding in a.
A new hire.
A new hire.
So it's seven. To be hired by January, potentially.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, that, I think we're, we're done with, um, employees, correct?
What about the, the parking individual?
The parking ranger.
Parking is a closed system, so.
It's, you know, that is in a, it's in the department fund and it's self-supporting, uh, or at least it's getting back to self-supporting. There isn't technology that really could replace what they do, you know, because part of the problem is the actual, one of the things they do is the ticketing. So we use technology as much as possible to identify the violators. We have cameras, these, um, plate readers. So they get a, they get like a whitelist every day on the computer. And they drive through the parking lot and it flags for them, people who are parking illegally. But then you still have to actually.
Write the ticket.
Create the ticket and, and put it on the vehicle. Um, they also do things like they maintain the parking lots, they, they, they're the ones who have to clear the, the snow off the platforms in the winter. And they do some light landscaping around the parking lots and if needed, they would help the public works crew, so. I don't think they can be replaced by technology, the, the question is, um, the volume of work. And we are seeing increasing parking people, we even, this may sound funny to you, but got a complaint this week about people trying to cheat the system and park in places where they're not supposed to be parking, in their commuters. And, uh, that was a good sign to me, that, um, you know, people are not finding spaces conveniently, so they're trying to, you know, mess around and get, you know, get spaces for free. So I, I see it coming back. It's, you know, I don't know that it'll ever get back to the levels it once was, but I believe that the, the fund can support it and that we do need to, um, be more aggressive with our, with our ticketing enforcement. And it's not just the parking lots, at the train stations, it's also the downtown parking lots. The merchant lots behind CVS, um, Mechanic Street, where we need enforcement.
I don't know, I just. And considering all the other things we're talking about and the relative importance of, uh, these positions, I, I just see that the, you know, the parking person isn't approve, really improving people's quality of life, they're improving their fund. And, uh, so I don't necessarily see the benefit of adding somebody else, uh, making that add this time. It may well turn out that it's coming back stronger than we thought, we're talking about these other pick, you know, positions, let's see what's, let's see what happens, so why don't we try that with, uh, you know, this position as, as well? I mean, I have a difficult time, you know, telling the, you know, police, we're going to wait on them, but you know, our, you know, our parking person, we're going to add a parking person to collect, you know, more fines, uh, you know, and that's just how I, I feel.
Well, I'd say, Mike, to your first point about, you know, adding to the quality of life is that what Kate was just saying is that somebody complained. So just like you don't want to get the ticket, um, the fact is that somebody was irritated enough that they couldn't find a spot, that they contacted town halls, so there's that side of the, there's that side of the coin, so. But I recognize what you're saying about, um, the, the police, that that's, that's a good point. I do go back to it's a, this is, the parking fund is a closed system, so, um, it needs to support this.
I wonder too, though, if the, um, the workload is going to be placed on the police department if we don't have a parking attendant?
No.
In, if, in the downtown area, if you have people that are illegally parking or not paying their, in these new.
They, well, they, yeah, they don't, the police don't ticket in the, um, in the parking.
Train stations, but how about?
In the train sta, or, no, not in the merchant lot either, they would only do.
Motion light, okay.
They would only do violations on the streets.
Okay. Any other thoughts on? Where, where do we, are we ready? Want to think about this one overnight?
We can think about it.
Yeah, okay, let's come back to this one.
That was a part-time position, right?
No, it's a full-time position.
Oh, it's full-time? I just don't see it, it's not up here, so.
It, uh, it's not up there because it's not a tax, um, impact.
Got it.
Are we going to go through each of the budgets?
You can do whatever you guys want to do.
I had a few things that I wanted to add back in.
Well, let's think about cuts right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so Kate, talk to us about, um, uh, the medical expenses.
So, um, our medical insurance, the early indicators we had were the, um, twenty percent increase in rates, and that's based on our, um, claim history. So we asked our brokers to put it out to bid, um, they did. I got the analysis this morning. We can definitely reduce the increase to nineteen percent, which saves us about thirty thousand dollars. We may be able to reduce it to fifteen percent if we decide to change carriers, but, um, having just gotten the analysis this morning, I want a little time to talk it through with our HR director and Jen. There would be some disruption, um, that's part of what they, they tell us is, you know, how many doctors are in the current, covered, under the current carrier and not under the new carrier and how many people would be, um, would have, basically have to change doctors. So I want to, you know, look through that and evaluate the impact of that.
Do you take a survey to see how it impacts each person?
No, the, the insurance company can do that because they simply look at, you know, which, which providers we had claims on with the existing carrier and is that provider, um, participating in the other? So interestingly, post fifty three is covered, they participate with our current provider and not with a potential new provider, so we'd have to work on that. But it's a thing to, it's, you know, disruption can, we have to look at all the issues with how it might impact the employees and long-term issues, so I'm just not comfortable, I haven't just gotten that analysis this afternoon with.
Making that, making.
Making that, that big jump.
Yeah.
We do have some, um, changes that we can tell you about related to revenue. Pam Gary notified me, um, today that their budget, their revenue can be increased by fifty three thousand dollars. And the health department had looked at their fees, they are still among the highest, um, fees around, they're not inclined to increase. Fire marshal is actively looking at it, um, the building department may increase theirs and if the building department increases theirs, then the fire marshal will be increasing a corresponding fee. Planning and zoning is planning to increase theirs already and that's built into the budget. The parking revenue assumes increased fees and, as you know, the solid waste fees were increased earlier this year, that impact this budget. Um, any use services budget reflects increased fees and we can add twenty five hundred dollars to the senior center budget for non-resident fees.
When is that moving forward? Pardon? When is the senior center non?
In July.
Resident, okay.
The, uh, the revenue for pickleball reservation, reservations, what does that anticipate in terms of a, a fee on a person or a group basis? What, you have fifty thousand dollars?
I don't think she told me the fee. Um, I have to pull up my email. I don't believe the information included the fee, um, you know, what the individual would be paying.
I don't know what I'll get, but I know I asked her that question, she said it, she budgeted it for spring, summer and fall. Based on all the people that are out there in January and February, I would say, you know, it could, it could potentially even be higher. Uh, if people are also reserving into the year months, but I don't know the, I know it, I don't know the exact blackout.
Yeah, the backup she gave me didn't say, um, what the, um, you know, what the, the fee per, per reservation would be. I mean, I assume it might be something similar to paddle court, but that's just my assumption.
Right, but then, under its current structure, there are, are times when sure you might reserve because it's that kind of play and you get a court for ninety minutes and then there's drop-in play where you don't reserve, it's just.
Show up.
Open, so I would imagine that those times wouldn't have fees associated because you're not reserving it.
Yeah.
You're just showing up. I mean, this is, I mean, the number will be whatever it'll, it'll be, but over that, you know, process is, is.
Yeah.
How that, there's going to be a determination if they're going to be fees associated with, you know, playing there is something that we'll have to have a lot of discussion.
You guys don't get to decide that.
Well, I, you know, who's ever listening.
Yeah, wants to know.
This is something. Because, I mean, I, I spoke to the, the chair last, last week because I went through the meeting minutes and I didn't see discussions of reservations and fees. So it's an important thing that that commission.
Do, yes.
Discusses that in a very transparent way, which I know is their habit.
So on another capital item, I reached out to the chief just to check in on the officer situation and also to ask him about the CAD, the Public Safety Computer Aided Dispatch and Records Management Software. This is a two hundred and twenty six thousand dollar item and I wanted to get his feeling because one of the things, one of the recommendations in the emergency services report was, um, to consider going to, um, a regional basis for dispatch. Using the same service that we currently use for the fire department, which, um, I just saw some great reviews from one of our fire commissioners or police commissioners on that, so. So anyhow, when I was chatting with the, with, um, the chief, um, this is a program that, and we need to update it and the software that we need, um, they've had, um, a difficult time getting. So, but it turns out that the software, we already, um, budgeted for the software, it's actually sitting in an account. And, um, the firm hasn't been responsive. The chief says that there are only three communities, municipalities in the state that use this firm, that they're thinking of leaving Central Square, but it's Darien, it's Stanford and it's Hartford. So I asked the chief, um, first, he's not in favor of a regional dispatch situation for lots of great reasons, but I asked him to get back to me, um, by tomorrow and let me know if we, um, if they could reach out again to see if we could get this upgrade and if it was just a, um, you know, a pandemic problem or something like that and, and if we could, if in fact, um, we have probably half of what we need for the upgrade and, you know, we're probably looking more like forty thousand instead of two hundred and twenty six thousand for the software upgrade, so. So I'm kind of teeing that up to ask you if we can discuss this tomorrow, but, um, that's a possibility. I did also mention to the chief that it would be, um, don't like to add items to the budget, however, I would be in favor of adding the chairs back for the dispatchers. I think that is a really good use of, um, eleven thousand dollars.
Every?
I would be, I would be in favor of that, so. So, that's that. The only other item, I think that, um, you know, a big, you know, when we're looking at capital, you know, I want to stay away from the small items, so I did, um, talk to Ed Gentile, our Director of Public Works, to see if there was any thing in his budget and he said the, um, the street sweeper, right? So the street sweeper is, um, it's, it's coming to its end of life. It had some, um, repairs which were, the problem was tough to identify. So that was part of the reason it took a little while and then to get the parts was, um, also added to the delay. But the, um, the identifying the problem, he doesn't think that, that time problem is going to be there going forward. So, long-winded way of saying that we could, um, do the repairs to the street sweeper, which is I think a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar number, yeah, for probably another year and we wouldn't, um, if something happened to the street sweeper, we're looking at, you know, ten, twenty thousand dollars in repairs as opposed to, um, you know, a new, a new price. However, the downside to that is the, the residual value for that now, I always ask, what's the scrap value? The re, the, you know, the trade in allowance, I guess is a good way to put it, of course, that will go down next year, right? And the price of the street sweeper could go up next year. So, um, I'm, I'm introducing that as an item to, you know, if we're looking for additional ways to defer costs, that is one that we could, um, I think we could defer, but we wouldn't be able to defer it indefinitely. You know, this is a, you know, it'll be, we'll be looking at it again next year, so.
I'm sorry, can you repeat how much the repairs would cost to end on this?
Twenty?
Twenty?
Yeah. But of course, Sarah, I don't, I don't know.
No, no, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I'm just thinking. I mean, obviously twenty is more palatable than three hundred.
Right.
But if it doesn't allow them to do what they need to do.
Well, they'll be able to work, they'll be able to do it, you know, the, the real question is, you know, it's twenty repairs this year, as Monica said, what is the cost going to be of the, the equipment next year? What's the value of the one we want to trade in next year? It's a bet.
Right.
I can't remember what he said was the lifespan on this.
Um, maybe on the sheet.
I feel like.
It's estimated for fifteen years.
Twenty years.
Was it fifteen years?
It says fifteen.
Fifteen? Yeah, fifteen-year life cycle, ten to fifteen.
So it's about twenty two thousand dollars a year anyway.
I mean, I feel that it, I mean, there's certainly benefit in pushing it off for next year, but maybe if we look at it at the end and see where we're landing and see how, you know, bad, you know, badly we need to bring the budget down, then maybe that could be, you know, a cherry to pick off. But maybe let's look, look at the other possibilities first, because I'm sensitive to what you're saying in terms of, you know, yes, repair costs, but what's it going to be next year versus that value, I think that's a good, you know, point. So maybe let's look at that in conjunction with the others.
And I appreciate that Ed offered that up.
Yeah. Yeah, thousand percent.
Well, I, I don't want to say that Ed offered it up.
I had, I should be praised, I should be praised, yes.
Ed begrudgingly acquiesced.
I, I really, I have to say, working through this budget, that, um, Kate and Jen, first they, you know, the department heads do a terrific job and then Kate and Jen go through with a scalpel, so it makes our job, you know, very difficult, so.
So I want to go with something you just said, you know, let's see where we are. It would really help if you had some sense of where you want to be because that could help us guide, you know, all right, to get there, you're going to need to cut these big things.
Do you mean presentize or?
Do you mean percentage-wise or number-wise?
Percentage-wise, number-wise, you know, give us a target.
We were at, what, 4.9?
Yeah.
Excluding debt service?
Excluding debt service, excluding library.
Okay. So, for, we haven't really done much to move the number right tonight, right, Jen?
No, you did. With the, with the changes in personnel, that's not quite a full percent, but it's a, it's a good chunk.
What does it give us?
It gives you, breaks the operations down to a 4.26% increase.
And Jen, does that include the $30,000 for medical?
No.
No, okay. And does it include the increase in any other revenues?
Yes, so what we have here is with town and library because you have control over both of those numbers, and then netting out the non-tax revenue. For those items, because revenue is up so high, it's actually a decrease of 0.65% that you need to raise in taxes for '24 versus '25 on the operations side.
Exclusive.
Exactly. And where you stand on capital right now, your total capital request is a 21%, almost 22% increase over the prior year.
What is the, based on our, this number right now, where we are right now, after we've made the suggested changes tonight, what is that raised in mill rate by? Do we know?
We don't know right now, but we can calculate that for you for tomorrow.
Yeah, no.
Wherever you end up today, we'll tell you.
Yeah, got it, got it.
No rate change.
What's the approximate value of a mil? Is it up to 100 now?
Eight hundred.
One mil?
Well, .01, it's like a --
.01 is 80.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-eight, eighty-seven, okay.
And 1% was about 30, 340.
Okay. There were a couple of other little things I wanted to add in. I know. I know you don't want adding back in.
I've got one too.
I hear that.
I've got one too, so.
I hear it.
Well, wait, do we have any other places to save a little money?
Before we get into doubling the budget, I'll make sure.
No. Okay. All right. Sarah, what do you want to add back in?
If we go under, sorry, the Open Gov is loading for me. I would like to add in the chairs for the dispatchers. I second that. Under community environment, I would like to add back in the grant for the kids in crisis.
That was what, 3,500?
I think it was 5,000, no?
They wanted five, and I put in 5,500.
I'm sorry, they wanted five and you put in 50?
They wanted five, I put in 1,500.
3,500.
Yes, I'd like to add the 3,500 to give them the five.
I don't get behind that because it's not going to impact the mill rate in any way.
And I'll support that because they're, they're --
They're doing work for this town right now.
They're helping additional families in town.
And I would support the aerator at Sheraton in the minimum.
What was the cost on that, 15K?
115.
18K.
I, you know, I recognize having people support our town by donating to make it look better, and there's been a lot of focus in that area. Just want to get really excited about that, so.
I'm sorry, are you saying that you prefer?
I'm saying I'm going to think about it.
Got it. I would like to, I did forget something that I wanted to maybe possibly cut, which is the work to the driveway at the nature center.
That's already cut.
Oh, it's already cut?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know if that was clear or not, thank you.
What was I thinking? But if there, if there was something, ooh.
I had that as a note, I don't think I noted that we had already taken it off.
Yeah. I mean, the only other thing I'd look at there is, you know, how do you feel about the pear tree? Without a plan, the work on the bathhouse.
That was my next question, was the pear tree bathhouse with, when they gave the proposal for the new work that was going down there, was that inclusive to some work on there?
Is that committee supportive of that?
Oh, absolutely, they are, they are.
They wanted them now.
Yeah, but we pay, we just did, like, we did painting, we did the bat, the sinks, we did faucets, so I think for 50,000, I would like to see what's going to happen.
I would support it. I think that is a facility that has needed some upgrades for quite some time.
To your point, though, they may actually already have plans and we just haven't seen them. Can we put in a request to see?
Yeah, I don't think they have. They have ideas, but there's not specific plans with quotes or anything like that.
I thought they had quotes from Neil Hock.
That was not my understanding.
Yeah, so let's find out on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a fair point. My only plug to add something back is the Historical Society. So, they started to get a town grant, I think in about 2016 for $10,000, and the purpose of that grant was to support their archives that are essentially property records and other town records that don't exist at Town Hall. So, sometimes you've got to go back significantly in time, and they've got those kind of records there, and they make them available to citizenry or even town officials that need to come in and take a look at ancient stuff, if you will. And so, that grant's been flat for a long time. They proposed, and their materials taking it from 10 to 20. It doesn't seem like much money, but I know that would help those guys a lot. And if you look at their finances in the email that the director sent over, they clearly could use that. I mean, I was president of that group until 2015, I think, so I know their circumstance well, and I know they could use it.
Understood. I just am wary of giving a grant that's a decent portion of their overall budget.
Not, it's, well, I don't know how decent it is. Their budget is, what, 180, 170, something like that? Not trivial, but it's, it's purpose-driven, which is record support for what they provide.
And do you see that going forward or for this year?
They just sit there for a long time, yeah.
No, no, no. Like, do you see 20,000 a year going forward or 20,000 for this year or for?
No, no, no. I'd say it would be flat for a long time, just like the 10's been flat for years.
Okay. So, moving up to 20.
And just leave it there, yeah.
And you feel that the additional 10 will increase access to those records?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at just inflation since the original 10 was granted, I mean, 20 obviously is more than just the inflation increase, but it's mostly that. And so, but they do a good job at preserving access to those records, and I don't know, that's my plug.
Okay. Kate, did we get, I don't remember seeing any financials on that.
Yeah, she found them.
They did.
They had their audited financials as well as their proposal.
Did I send it to you? Yes, you did, okay.
Okay. So, I guess I'm with Mike. So, are they doing additional work, and that's why they need the additional funds, or they're just?
I think it's partly that the grant's been flat for a very long time, so just as an inflation matter, it's worth a lot less than it was, what, six, seven years ago when they first got it? So, I think they would continue to provide these records or make them available to the extent that there's additional upkeep or sorting or organization of those records. These funds would cover that.
Do you think they're adding to the records? Like, is there stuff that's being removed from our Town Hall and being brought over there?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't think so. I think this really is just maintenance of stuff they've had for a long time.
All righty. I'm going, I did not look at that information, so can we finish this one up tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other thoughts, anyone? No? Okay.
The only one, other one, I considered offering up is we did, we did make some assumptions on terminal leave payouts. You know, we could cut that and take our chances that people will or will not go through with their stated plans to retire.
Is that just the bottom line on the number?
The number's now 200. It's because we do anticipate a senior employee retiring. That's not all his, you know, or hers, but.
When you say stated plans, I mean, these are individuals who have indicated that they're coming up or?
Well, we tend to, we tend to fund it at a certain level to begin with.
Right, sure.
But if we know somebody has stated that, you know, when I hit this age or when I hit this many years of service, I'm planning to go, and they tend to repeat it frequently, you know, we take a look at how much their payout might be, and so we did add to that budget this year, in part because we expect that person to go.
And that stays in the account until?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, at some point, we would need to pay that money out.
You know, some of it depends on, like, how long the position remains vacant when that person leaves, and are there any savings from their salary line?
Right.
So, it's just, you know, something that would be a little bit of a crapshoot, but.
Would you recommend maybe funding it half or? I mean, obviously, there's going to be a minimum that we need to have in there.
I'd say we could cut 20 to 50 if we were going to, if we were willing to take the risk.
20 or 50% or 20, 50,000?
Thousand.
Okay. So, 25% possibly.
Well, if you do 20, that helps with the charge project, and it almost gets you there on the aerator.
Well, yeah, but this isn't really, I mean, we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to pay it, or it's going to sit and be used, you know, next year, so. Kate, we're, taking out this unusual situation, where are you keeping it flat from last year?
We did increase it, we made an estimate of what the conversion, the new provision in the police contract where they can convert sick time to a 47 conversion, contribution, so we did increase it based on that. But again, that's something we just made an estimate of how many would actually take advantage of. We have no experience on, you know, to base that on, so the increase was two-fold.
Well, you're offering it up, so that makes us stop and think. All right, let's circle back on that one tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, anything else? No?
No.
Okay, so we have a few things for tomorrow. Next slide, am I on the agenda? I don't know where my agenda went. Minutes. Okay, what's the date, Kate? I don't know where my.
January 24th. It was the joint department head's day.
Okay. Any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes?
No.
Seeing none, may have a motion to approve. Mike moves, Sarah seconds. All in favor? Okay, unanimous? What else we have?
That's it.
Agenda review.
Agenda review.
Agenda review? I think we're, we're pretty, we're, any items for agenda review?
None at this time.
Okay. Wow, look at that. Motion to adjourn. Mike moves. Marcy seconds, all in favor?
All set.
Thank you.
Did everybody sign?
Thank you for joining.